There is no video, though.
Oh.
Oh.
Yeah.
How about now?
I have it down.
Yeah.
On this one.
Yeah, I was just trying to have that on. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's good. This is the Tuesday, July 25th, 2023, regular meeting of the Funds for our Planning Board. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act with ad put in electronic net. This meeting has been provided by publication and the Hundred and Hundred Democrat and Press newspaper's honor about January 18th or 19th, 2023. In addition, the notice of this meeting was posted in the door of the Borough of Flummington Municipal Authority located here at 38 Park Avenue and any handicap accessible addresses there, too. Those are the municipal website, provided to the municipal district. It's all persons, if any, requesting copies of saying this meeting has been recorded with both audio and video and may be rebroadcast. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be permitted to the issues that are relevant to what the court may legally consider reaching a decision. The port of appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Let's get one of these rises. You're able to five salute. Pledge of the agenda, stand and pray, United States of America, to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Name.
Karen, here. Mrs. Engler, or excuse me, Councilwoman Engler. Yeah, here. Mr. Campion.
Here.
Mr. Dasna.
Here.
Mr. Levitt.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Giffen.
Yeah.
Ms. Weitzman.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Mr. Semino.
Here.
Mr. Echo.
Here.
Mr. Whitechuck.
Here.
Mr. Show.
He was gonna be out, so.
Um, Ms. Kaczynski.
Here.
Ms. McManus.
Here.
And Mr. Clericom and Mr. Rattler Parks.
All right. Good evening. Uh, item one on the agenda, as always, a period, uh, private period of public comments. Um, if anyone wishes to speak, please raise your real or virtual hand. Steve, now we'll move on. Item two, mayor comments.
None tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, item three, council comments.
Hi, thank you, Jeff. Um, I just have two really quick comments. Last night at the council meeting, there was an ordinance introduced to adjust, um, a parking spot on Main Street to be a compact spot. And I suspect that, um, in order to give some more, um, uh, visual, um, ability for people coming in and out, um, as well as, um, pedestrian, you know, visibility too, so they don't get cars coming in and out of a parking spot, the driveway. Um, so that's going to be on the agenda for public, um, comment at the next council meeting. Um, but it certainly relates to what we do at the planning board, too. So I figured I'd mention it. Um, I suspect the parking committee that's been newly formed on the council will probably be taking a look at any other locations around town that, um, kind of similar situations that this might be affected by and and take that into consideration. Um, and number two, um, one of my other, um, and I mentioned this at the council meeting as well last night, one of my other responsibilities on council is as the school liaison. And, um, there were some comments made at the last high school, um, uh, board of ed meeting that I found interesting, specifically, um, related to some of the more recent developments in Raritan Township, um, and how the district, um, was, um, uh, disappointed and had some issues with the lack of access to pedestrian access from the new developments to the high school. So I just wanted to kind of he, um, ask everybody on the planning board to keep that in mind as you move forward reviewing any type of new development in town, newer or redevelopment, I should say, in town. Um, because we do have two walkable school districts. Um, one serves RIFIS, um, uh, FRSD, there's a lot of walkers there, as well as, of course, the high school, anybody within a two square mile, uh, two square, uh, two miles of the, um, high school has to walk. So we want to make sure that, um, even though we have a lot of already built in sidewalks, we definitely have some areas that we have noted in the past. Um, I could think of one along New Jersey Avenue that is kind of inconsistent with sidewalks where kids actually are walking along on the street. So as we move forward, let's keep that in mind. Um, it was something that the district, um, reached out to Raritan about. Uh, so I want to make sure that we keep that sensitivity as we move forward with other developments. And that's all.
Please did. What we found there.
Thanks. Great, um, great, uh, souvenir from vacation.
Item four is HPC comments or liaison is, uh, is absent, but he did send a brief email, um, the other day. There were two HPC resolutions that everyone should have seen. And, uh, as many of you know, HPC was in front of council, um, uh, recently talking about, uh, uh, minor changes to the, uh, app or the storage district. Uh, but that was the report. Uh, item five is approval of minutes from our June 27, 2023 meeting. Those were circulated electronically. Do I have a motion and a second of minutes? So move. Is there any discussion, corrections, or clarifications on the minutes?
Yeah, the only clarification, I think that the minutes were accurate. Um, when we discussed the, um, red vanilla building and being painted, um, Dennis said he was gonna, uh, reach out the building inspector. But I think that's all been resolved, but the minutes are still correct. So.
Correct. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was part of the record, so.
Yeah, so.
Even that, we can, we could add that to this middle seven, everything is.
You can put it inside, so it's that way. Of the chair, I already received whatever. Any other, uh, issues with the minutes?
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Semino.
Yes.
Mayor Carol, Steve. Councilwoman Engler. Yes. Mr. Campion.
Yes.
Ashna.
Yes.
Mr. Levitt.
Yes.
Ms. Giffen.
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman.
Yes.
Okay, item six on our agenda is, uh, resolution for the Schreger application that was approved at our last meeting, um, assuming that it's not been done, finished yet. Okay.
But not the whole.
So, okay, so let's push that to our next meeting. All right, item seven is a resolution PB 2023 dash 12 memorializing our action on adopting rules of citizen input that was circulated earlier today, um, remembering. Correct. Um, so I do need, um, actually, if you can, is, is everyone eligible to vote on that? Everyone voted out of the board. We voted, we voted that in two meetings ago.
Yeah. In the minutes.
If you were not here at the.
July 20.
At the June 20th meeting. Fourth.
Yeah, the 13th and the 27th.
27th. If you were not here at the June 27th meeting.
Yeah.
Alaska, you have stated.
Uh, it was just my.
Right, so is there, you gotta get a motion and a second on, uh, the resolution. No, who?
Second, Cook.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mayor Carol.
Yes.
Councilwoman Engler.
Yes.
Mr. Campion.
Yes.
Mr. Dasna.
Yes.
Mr. Levin.
Yes.
Ms. Weitzman.
Yes.
Mr. Semino.
Yes.
Thank you. Item eight on the agenda this evening is an ordinance review. We had talked about it, uh, at a prior meeting and the subcommittee and Beth will go back and make some updates. So maybe, uh, that was circulated to everybody last week, uh, that maybe you could talk through changes that were made.
Yeah, you have to. Um, so at the meeting, there were very few changes requested and discussed by the board. I got, uh, I'm gonna do the easy ones first, and then we'll go through the, the one that I think is more substantive. Carrying a couple of, uh, I would say really corrections and clarifications, which I incorporated in there. That included, uh, in the definition of office, uh, we had, uh, excluded, uh, referencing dental offices, since we're also defining medical office that includes dental. So it's really just a minor clarification, improvement of the ordinance, uh, that's in the, uh, the definitions document. Um, and then for the permitted uses as part of the TC district, one of the permitted uses was residential use since the acceptance of the adoption date of this ordinance, or as for a clarification, uh, that really intends to confirm that if you have an existing residence, you're allowed to enlarge the home. So right now it reads residential uses, existing as of the date of this ordinance, which may be expanded or enlarged without the need for a use variance. Any such expansion or enlargement should however be complied with applicable bulk or other requirements. So it's, uh, it's a little bit of additional, uh, uh, flexibility for existing homeowners and clarification for the board. The other change or the other, uh, topic that was addressed by the board was also the intent of the board. And, uh, in here, you may recall, we have residential uses that are permitted as conditional use, uh, with one of the conditions being frontage along Route 12 or South Main Street. The board asked that the ordinance go back to subcommittee to consider public locations specifically along Park Avenue. And so on the July 10th, subcommittee meeting, we talked about that and the board, uh, excuse me, the subcommittee, uh, discussed the various locations, but found that the intent of that, uh, provision was intended to reflect the, the mixed use overlay district. And then furthermore, they were most comfortable with defining that conditionally used to the Route 12 area. So that aspect of the ordinance is unchanged. And those were, those were the three changes that were incorporated into the ordinance. The package that was resent to the board or was sent to the board includes all of the, uh, all of the documents. It's not just simply the changes. So it's the, the new TC district, it's the relocation of the old district, this entire zone district will no longer exist in town, um, minor, minor other, uh, zoning changes, and then also the, the definitions as well. So it's largely unchanged from, from what the board had reviewed. There were really just two items of clarification that.
Okay, so folks have had the minutes to review, um, the updated, uh, packet. Uh, is there, are there other questions for Beth?
Quick one, um. Excellent. For, uh, the condition, I mean, residential units that do not face a public street may be located on the first floor. Would that allow for the back of a unit to face the street and the door, if somebody wants to certainly put the doorway. Some access from behind. And then we would, the idea of an illness and A, I would imagine, is that we're trying to get retail on first floor and residential upstairs.
Yeah. It's in the, uh, TC district. Page two, so, yeah.
No, it's okay. Thank you.
So Ian and I, so I get that Ian and I are supposed to work together, that residential units don't face the street, may be located on first floor. And whilst you could read that, it's just units that inside of development, not on the street edge, right? But the way it's written, could it be? Give me about reading it wrong, but could it be that if somebody had a unit that chose to put the door on the backside of it and have a flat face on the street side, we wouldn't be allowing a residential unit on that?
It's the question of the word face as opposed to locate.
That one, the definition of, yeah. Um. Not, you know, it's just that if you leave something like that, and it could be misused by somebody, that, that, and that's not our intention for that.
Yeah. How would you define face, right? That is the question.
Yeah, I think that it's an easy clarification to make. If the board, you know, I, I understand your point, like if you, I guess the, you know, for a, uh, for a long apartment, long area apartment, the point is that the rear of the department could face Route 12, they could put the, perhaps the only entrance to the unit, to the, to the rear of the property so their apartment isn't the street. Are they gonna successfully get around it? Um, I think it would be a big burden for them to overcome, but since we're in the draft version of this ordinance, I don't have any concern about having a clarification, uh, to essentially swap in principle face to location.
Because the intent is to have active use on the first floor, unless, so I'm, I'm thinking just not to be particular. I mean, I know it's on this TC, but like the redevelopment at 123 Main, um, where there are, there is a rear building, um, that has resident first floor, and that approval was tied to the fact that there was active use on the first floor. Now, that's where the red culture is now, those are the numbers.
Yeah.
Uh, but that the rear was, the discussion at the time was, since there was a residential facing Main Street, and it was kind of a rear building, it was okay. We, you know, the board allowed that to, to move forward. And so could we figure out some language? Like, you know what I'm saying? Like, like, I don't think we would have an objection to that kind of situation where there was a second building or some other way to.
But I'm also thinking of, uh, so I, where there's a separate building, I think that's a very easy interpretation, but I'm also thinking about a deeper building, where just for simplicity, the, the front half is the non-residential, the back half is the residential. So that's the, that's the needle I want to thread in response to this comment about location.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, Susan had a hand up. Is, is this on something else, Susan, or is it the same thing? Something different?
It's on the same thing. I, I just wanted to, to remind, um, to speak for the subcommittee since Dennis isn't here. I think that comment was inspired a lot by, and the other subcommittee members can correct me if I'm wrong, but Dennis had made a really good point in regards to a lot of historic buildings in town or, like, are very deep. And I think that's what you were getting at with both the 123 main issue that you had mentioned before, as well as some other of the deeper, um, lots. There are either outbuildings or deeper buildings where that first floor opportunity, um, we don't want to necessarily limit somebody's development capability, um, of their own, you know, property from, you know, by providing a, oh, that was not good. Um, providing a, um, a, uh, a residential unit on the first floor, um, from the back. Um, so I think that's where Dennis's inspiration was, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, there was a, let's, let's take the time, it's out of here, but let's say that there was a long skinny building.
Exactly. That was his point.
And an apartment on the first floor in the back. The intent is that that would probably be okay.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
Right?
And we had to say it just like that, whether you want to say active, we want to say non-residential, I don't know what the.
Yeah, I think I'm gonna use language, uh, resident, first floor residential floor area shall not be located. From the, I have to think about that space is not the right word to imply the front, but, uh, shall not be located along, uh, along the street frontage, some along those lines.
Right. And then.
My main concern here is, is not an older building.
Right, right.
It's, it's a new build somewhere, but like physically, uh, with this word in a developer, if they were wanting to put units, and we would expect a door on the unit on the front, and, and they wanted to do that residential instead of retail, they would flip that unit 118.
Yeah.
They had a back exit, had a good back, and we'd have a completely flat front with nothing. And that would be allowed by this.
Yeah, yeah.
And we don't want, like, what we want, and that, but they could use this to achieve that. So I don't know whether it necessarily needs wording for the scenario you suggest. I think, I'm.
I think that's fine.
Right, especially when you use them all in conjunction, right before the, um, item D, is the development shall be mixed use, in residential and non-residential use. So in other words, when you put it all together, you really couldn't build
Yeah.
just an apartment facing backwards, because not be compliant with.
Because you could put one unit on one floor as a, as a retail, and you have a six on, 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 I'd say it's a long strip of units. You could have five of them facing the back, or one facing the front, and they comply.
Let's say you've got a store, a store, I hear what you're saying, new construction, you got a store in one corner, and then you got five blind slate places in front of us because the residential units are facing the rear a little.
Except for, again, I, I, I think you got the language down, but that would not be compliant with item number three, which only allows.
That's, thanks. Uh, okay.
So in other words, we, we thought of this, but not what Karen said.
Yeah.
So we had thought of, what, is there a way that you can, you know, misread? So I think if you're able to reword that face and locate.
Yeah, I think that I'm gonna, um, I'm playing with the language right now. I don't love it, but I think the principle is going to be a better version of residential floor area shall not be located along the public street. So that's the, that's the requirement, and then I'll go on to provide clarification. First floor residential, we've been located at the rear of the building. And I think these, these concepts need to be better married and clarified, but that's the, that's the more beyond requirements, clarification, maybe example. I'm still not sure whether it's. Yeah, you know, thank you.
And Beth, if you could just maybe cross-reference, I think what Karen's concerns are might also be addressed in the architectural limitations, uh, you know, like what, what the design requirements. So you might want to cross-reference that and see if that helps her concerns at all.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good. Other, other, uh, concerns or questions?
Just as a process, Beth, so you'll rewrite that piece, distribute it, uh, and we will vote next meeting.
So that's my question. Does the planning board want this revision to come back to you guys for review before it gets passed on council, or do you want me to handle this another, and that's on council?
So, so one option is to have it come back one more time. But we could also, I mean, the vote here is, 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 is kind of an endorsement. It's not really a resolution. It's not a.
Why don't I prepare a resolution for the next meeting that basically authorizes this attachment to be transferred to council for its review and consideration? And if you're ready at that point to adopt what you have in front of you, great. If not, we carry.
Because we don't have that resolution tonight.
Don't.
No, no, and that's okay. We didn't know enough.
Yeah. So you're saying I'll give it to the planning board, they'll review it and pass a resolution?
Yeah. But I, yeah, I would, I would, yeah, I would like for us to be able, I would like for us to be able to have it back if we could, but that, but no later than the next meeting, because it only sounds like it's just a couple.
Yeah, I don't, unless both of the subcommittee disagree, I don't feel like this needs to go back for a subcommittee meeting before it gets sent back.
No, I think. And then, next meeting, and then we'll endorse it and have the resolution on the agenda. Do it all. There's no reason, because there's no reason for it not to go that.
And, yeah. Someone thinks of something else, or there's another discussion on it.
Okay. Any other clarifying things while we're, we're here? Because it sounds like we're pretty much there.
I just want to say I like that way better because it's the keeper way, too, because we need to keep the, keep this budget a little tighter now.
No, no.
That process will make it not going back and forth, you know, back to the subcommittee is a better thing.
Thanks, Minister, to the governing body. They will then hopefully introduce it on first reading. It'll come back to us for endorsement, which should hopefully be a very quick thing, because we've, we're the ones who wrote it. Um, and then, and then it would go back for a second reading, public hearing, and hopeful adoption, you know, if it really short or order. Okay, good.
Right.
All right, thank, thanks for the subcommittee, thanks for the work. This is, this is good. This is, we're making good progress here. All right, um. Item nine was, we put a discussion item for the Flummington Alboral LC living wall. So, uh, and I want to thank, uh, Eileen for cir- digging up and circulating the, uh, resolution. There was, um, we'd also asked Kara to also reach out to council and see if we can answer the update. So for everyone's benefit, where are the, where are the, like, what page is, are the conditions? And just.
So the conditions start on page 13. And, you know, there's a, a couple that talk about replacement and maintenance bonds and that sort of thing, maintenance premiums. But I think the one that probably would be most applicable to what we're talking about here is condition 16 on page 15. Um, just so the board knows, I did reach out to Jacqueline Uminio, who was the attorney to handle the application. She's no longer with that firm. I reached out to her at her new firm. I did not get back from her, reached out a couple times. Um, I also reached out to the prior firm themselves to see if I could get someone there to, this, again, let me know if they stayed with their firm or went with her. I have not heard back. So the last thing that, um, I asked Eileen to help me out with is to, uh, our files and storage, and we transfer over our electronic files to a new system, um, after this application. So I want to get the name of the person that's listed as the contact on the application itself, and reach out to them and see if we can get some. Um, now there obviously were people that were discussing things directly with the governing body because there had to be agreements. So that's another, you know, option, just to see if anyone has any other contact. But unfortunately, I don't have any update as to, you know, status, where they are, what's happening, what the next steps are, what's holding things up.
Can I ask a legal question on, on condition 16?
Yeah.
Okay, discontinuation of use means something was used and then it was stopped. Okay. I know abandonment is a specific legal word. Can you help us understand if something actually never got built, never got turned on, is that abandonment of use or is it not abandonment?
So the, the intention of this condition was to say that, once you're done, and if all of a sudden the advertising dries up and it's no longer being used, you guys didn't want just a blind wall there, despite the fact that you could maintain it with the maintenance agreement and the escrows and the maintenance bonds and all that other stuff, you wanted the ability to say, okay, this has got to come down because it's no longer being utilized for the purpose that it was approved for. I don't think the intention ever, you know, we never really thought about the fact that it would be completed because once condition, once, uh, permits are old and everything else and everything, you know, and move forward from there. Um, this is definitely a unique situation, which is why I think that the applicant should, you know, have the opportunity to give us some updates as to what's going on. Because again, we're kind of, at least as far as I know, in the darkness where things really stand. So I can tell you that, which I find the email, I don't know if I can, um, but, um, SCP has been involved in trying to get this thing moving. Um, I'm not really sure. I didn't attend the hearings, but these are on here. Um, so I'm, so I don't know, um, if they had taken some kind of ownership, like, did they come in and support it? Anyway, like, I'm not really sure why, but, um, the executive director of the SCP had reached out to one of the board members who, um, apparently has connections to another company that makes these convex, whatever they are, convex, um, screens. That's what the council was told, was that the holdup was China and material and COVID and manufacturing. They couldn't get these special convex, um, uh, uh, screens, screens. I guess that's what they are, right? Screens. So.
Displays.
So the council was told that early this year, and maybe two months ago, uh, one of the board members reached out to a competitor of manufact- manufacturing competitor to China. And he basically said, no, you know, we can, we, we're not having an issue. So then, uh, Robin went back to, I mean, and I have that contact, Kara, in my emails. Yeah, I think it would be helpful. And Kara went back, um, sorry, and Robin went back, and then he responded about what he was gonna, I guess, I'm gonna see, well, you guys are talking, if I can find. I don't usually go into any of my work, my, my council emails on my personal cell phone ever. So I'm not even sure I can access it, but I'm gonna try.
Well, I know based on the fact that we put a temporary banner up.
Um, yeah, she put a banner.
That was, that was when.
Right.
The original, we're gonna, we're gonna get to it as soon as China lets us. That's the May.
Right, that banner was supposed to be up through April and because it was supposed to go up through May.
Right.
And, but not even the screens. I guess my concern is, I thought, I'm just looking through these, um, uh, conditions. I thought there was escrow. I don't know why the borough doesn't want to plant. I don't know. Like, go in there, use the money, hire a company, pull out all the dead plants. It's not the fact that, you know, I could live without, you know, like, there's having trouble getting screens, but it's so, it's just such a, it's called the living wall, and it's dead. I mean, now the landscaping is pretty, like, they did landscape, but the wall itself, because they don't have the irrigation system working yet.
Which was another condition, yes.
So, so again, and I don't mean to play hardball, but that's why we have.
Well, I have a hardball question. I won't tell you the answer to this, but at what point are they beyond the point where the borough, these daycare pools are black, so that they pull building permits?
Well, that was tied into my question about contained on to this. I, I, as well as 16, Kara, I think 22 and 25 are relevant. 25 is the biggest one, I think. So that, that's the applicant should obtain permits. So that, that's the, the applicant should obtain permits two years from the adoption of the resolution. And, and sure, we collected the initial permits, but also it said in that two-year period, our extension thereof is granted by the board. We were not, we were not, um, approached for an extension.
But that's.
Extinctions may have gone on the front. Right, but permit as well does expire. Um, I believe, but we can find that out from our permit official, a permit is not in perpetuity terms, but it can expire. So, and, um, and I have to get files to obtain a permit or request it, and then the approval and all relief granted is automatically expired and become null and void. And my thing, my main worry for this, and this is a question of comparison, if that, if, if those, or if, if the approval is expired, then what legal, um, what's the word for it, um, legal exposure, does the borough have if something happens with an accident with that, because it's expired, the, 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 you know, approval and relief granted is expired.
Yeah, I.
But what, no, you can find that out.
I can, but I would say that that's a typical condition that would be placed on to hold the permits, and there's a specific MLUL extension that allows that, the extended, grants you protection against any changes in zoning ordinance, as long as you continue to get that extension before you fulfill resolution conditions that lets you follow up.
But they've obviously pulled permits because they've constructed
Correct.
almost all of this thing.
Correct.
Right, but we could find out whether it stands within our.
No, we did, there's a lot of questions, there's a lot of unanswered questions, and I think that they are all very intertwined. But to your specific question, that one relates to the pulling of the permits.
All right, so the last response I think I have is from Wednesday, June twenty-first. Um, and, uh, this, the person from Catalyst X, right? Sorry, his name is Joe Weinlick, I did an email address, Carol, let me send you, please. Um, and he forwarded to the people on here, the couple of board members and um, the council vice, the council president and myself, uh, photos of the finished displays, we're working on timing for the shipment, we'll set the time uh, for completion, that was the last word. Uh, and so I'm gonna, Kara, I'm gonna try to figure out how to forward this to you on this phone, though I didn't think I said I don't want to make.
Well, that's fairly recent, so maybe I'll go again, I don't want to make, I don't want to make this going to trouble.
An additional concern I have with permits is on twenty-six, is that the NJD, the two of them expired, but they were practiced.
That's an annual permit, and it has to be regranted annually, that I do know.
Yeah, but we're checking, I don't think it's, I would, uh, I'd like to first ask for that to be proven at this point, that it was done, because if that's not done, then this whole thing is.
They haven't satisfied, they're, right, they're, they've not satisfied with this twenty-six.
And they're not, they're, they're out of contract, they're loose contracts, and therefore, we have a whole, it's liable.
Susan, I'm sorry.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to ask, uh, you know, I've been kind of, I, I'm letting the, the, the reason why the FCP was the council liaison that kind of was coordinating the efforts here was specifically because the FCP wa- you know, would be the benefactor, obviously, with the advertising on the, on the wall, so they were the most anxious to get, you know, some feedback as to why these con- convex screens were not, you know, mysteriously not available for manufacturing, but I would, I would, uh, just, uh, request that Marcia, if you could, please make sure that, um, any correspondence that the FCP sends out, um, through, you know, with, with, with Tony and, and, um, and Robin get copied to me as well, um, as the council rep for the planning board, since this is obviously still a planning board concern as well. I'd appreciate it.
Sounds like, though, that the enforcement to Todd's point about the escrow, about the living wall, that's a, that's a, that's not really, is it ours to enforce, or is that the?
I think it's code, I, I it could be the code enforcer, not us, wouldn't it?
Yeah, there was, again, the intention there was not necessarily that it be just utilized as a maintenance once it's done. It's throughout the project, and that's why we specifically put that line.
Right, but that's.
And there's two things about it, well, it's got, you know, the second fact is it's not turned on. Um, number one is, you know, regarding, you know, if his, if his issue is getting these screens, um, do something about all the damn dead ID, and the back isn't done. You know, I mean, the back is still open metal, it's not finished, so.
Yeah, when was the last time they actually did any construction?
Well, the, I believe, because the open metal is where the screens plug into, so that's why on the front, the banner is covering the open metal framework. Uh, but what's not done is any of the infrastructure in the back, if you remember, there were supposed to be, uh, solar trees, uh, there is, now, again, there is a new shed back there, so they are working on it. A- a- again, that's why I was concerned about how the borough takes action and says, listen, we're taking escrow and we're gonna replace plants. I, I, I don't know, I don't know, and again, we're not the enforcement, and, and.
Well, that's why I want us to be careful, because we, yeah, but we don't, we don't have enforcement power, that's the borough's code enforcement, so too. We, I think that, and I'm, I'm saying, Susan, uh, as our council liaison and the mecca sitting here, like, like, we, we want to make sure that this stuff's enforced, and there is a mechanism resolution here to, with the escrow, to just get it.
So we want, I mean, my fear of that is that we go through that escrow, replacing their problem, because they haven't put any.
Oh, we want them to do, but, but like, we tell them, we're gonna start spending the money, and since this isn't done yet, we're gonna make.
I just want to take, take down dead stuff, like, don't put it up into your irrigation systems, you know, but take down dead stuff and mow, and trim or something. Is it, is it a better use of our escrow to remove all the dead plants? Rather than putting in a new Bible, just to the expectation that they may also die, and then we're stuck in a cycle.
Why can't we just tell them who want that, not, not the planning board, the council.
The council is.
Tell them to take down the dead stuff. You know, property enforcement.
Well, right, through our property maintenance office, you should be.
Yeah. I mean, listen, if we had someone on board, like I said, a month ago, essentially, this person should be able to be contacted, and I think we'll be able to get, you know, some additional information, especially if I relay that these are concerns, and these are concerns that, you know, the, the planning board and the council are considering taking action.
So I'll forward you, I'll forward you this email contact, all right, you can reach Chad's name, as the planning board is already saying these are their concerns, and, you know, the, the tab is gonna start demanding that you, you know, I mean, our property maintenance officer can get them with, uh, you've got two weeks to clean up all this dead stuff and trim up your property, and we're gonna start handing you the sums.
And, you know, obviously, we have replenishment language in there too, but.
No, I mean, clearly you want them to, you don't want to have to spend it. Right, I mean, that's the first preference, but first preference is to think it's finished, and it's actually been exposed, but absent that, okay, good.
I, I just want to add one thing, is I think we really just need to double-check with both Dave, our code, our, our, our property management person, and John, our new code, our code official, because frankly, we're kind of floating between these two. So i- i- if it's Dave, make sure that Liz has copied on it. If it's, you know, if planning board's taking the lead, make sure that we're copied on, uh, you know, I'm copied on it, it's, it's, it, we're kind of in the, I think we need to make sure we're, we're, we're keeping in touch with both Dave and, um, John through this process, that's all, that's all I'm asking. To make sure that they're, the code officials are the ones that are deciding who we are, uh, you know, who's taking the lead on this.
I think we don't know what, because I think we need answers as to what's happening. And first, turn around and say, listen, we're gonna do X, when they X date, there's a letter that says this is what we're gonna do, the panels are gonna come in, we're gonna fix it, but then we have a framework, and then at that point, if something's not done that Dave indicated that they can do, then we could parcel as to whose responsibility that is to enforce, to send you a letter, or do whatever the case may be, including asking for an update as to the renewal of the permit. So I, I think that's, that's how we're doing, because I think we need the answers first before we can, but I, I totally agree, everybody needs to stay in their own lane and do what it is that they are responsible for.
All right.
Thank you.
We have a plan, it sounds good. All right, Karen, thank you for bringing this up. I intend, uh, chair items, our next meeting is August eighth. Um, so we have.
We have, um, for the resolution for the Stryker, um, application at the degree speed, uh, the ordinance, uh, endorsement and resolution to send to council, and public hearing for the, um, Stryker, um, application at thirteen, right, street, continuation, um, and they've, uh, you know, corrected their notice.
We're assuming that they have.
Uh, we're assuming they have, I have not seen, I have not gotten a copy of that yet.
Okay, so let's, let's, I mean, we'll presume, we'll presume, we'll proceed, and we can tell, we'll, we'll go here from council.
That was continued at the last.
Yeah.
And then, um, for the August twenty-second meeting, we have the continuation of, um, the BSD Flemington Apartments Place Factory, uh, public hearing, uh, we also have completeness for the Central Station LLC. And we have a new application that just came in, um, at seventy-eight Church Street. I don't have electronic copies at this point, there are, there is a box there with hard copies, if anyone would like to take a copy of it.
Seventy-eight Church Street is the old right gate, it's a minor. All right, so is anybody not gonna be here next meeting, or the second meeting in August, just to make sure we've got numbers, bar and all that?
I'll be on Zoom the seventh.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, Eileen, did something, so we should come by and pick up those packages if we're not in, you know, if we're not there tonight?
Right, and, uh, send a, an email to the applicant to provide those electronic copies, once I have those, I will distribute those to the board and post them on to the borough website.
Yeah, the one that's Central Station, that's the old burg, it's that one, there's just a link in the mail, there aren't any attachments to it, because he's a, so.
Yes.
Everybody knows, looks a little different than you're up.
It's just the link, and, yeah, the, the emails came in three different, um, emails, because of the, due to the size of the files, and, um, some of the, some people don't, can't accept those, those large files.
All right, any other chair items? Okay, um, bills were circulated, do I have a motion on the bills?
So move, go.
Yes.
Sam Carroll?
Yes.
Councilwoman Agnewheart?
Yes.
Mr. Champion?
Yes.
Good afternoon?
Yes.
Mr. Levin?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Ms. Whitson?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
You?
Fresh reports, attorney?
Nope.
Planner?
Nope.
We don't have the other folks, um, do we need to go to executive session? Can I get a motion returned? All, may I ever say aye?
Aye.
Aye.